Meeting of the Amherst School Committee to order at 6:01 PM. And a reminder that this meeting is recorded and live broadcast by Amherst Media. I also want to let the committee know that Mr. Nakajima will not be in attendance tonight. He is traveling. So first order of business, I want to approve minutes.
Is it public?
Later, yep, yep. Do you have an agenda? Does everyone have an agenda? Okay, great. Okay, um, so I'll take a motion to approve the minutes before we move into discussion, if that's okay with everybody?
I move to approve the minutes.
Okay.
Second.
Second. So any comments, edits, corrections? Give you a moment to look this over. All good? Okay. All those in favor of approving the minutes for April, Tuesday, April 24th, raise your hand. It's unanimous, okay. Thank you very much. Okay, before we move into announcements from the committee, I just wanted one quick agenda structuring issue, if that's okay. I wanted to move to table the discussion on reorganizing the subcommittees until we have all committee members in attendance, if that works for folks.
Mm-hmm.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor? Great, thank you. So we will table this discussion for our next meeting. Okay, any announcements from the committee? No? None? Okay. That's easy. All right, so we'll move to public comment. So just a reminder, any members of the public, if you would please announce yourself, state your name, and make sure you're speaking into the microphone when you interest the committee.
Great. Carol Gray. I'm a parent of a seventh grader who, by the way, loves your middle school. Teachers are excellent. Programs after school are excellent. We love it. But I'm actually here to talk about something else. Oh, and by the way, I noticed you're doing an evaluation of Mike, and he, I think, we think he's doing a really terrific job. He doesn't agree with everything we proposed, which is fine, which is, but he listens to the public, responds to email faster than anyone on the planet, and he really cares about kids, so. But that's not why I'm here either. Here's why I'm here. So, and I apologize first that I should give you the one that, my ink ran out, my red ink ran out, so some of you have ones that are low. And I emailed all of these to you. So what I'm giving you is, I'm a town meeting member, and we learn a lot in town meeting. One of the things I learned was that there's a number of kids in Amherst that don't get to go to preschool because there's, they don't have money. And I also learned that the two positions being cut for the preschool are actually elimination of the preschool. So here's what I'm, I'm giving you a heads up, that I'm going to move to reconsider the elementary school budget as a town meeting member. Well, either I or probably it's going to be me. And I'm hoping to ask for funding to keep the preschool and to allow it to include more children who don't have money to pay for preschool, because they'll be at home. And, I mean, I don't need to tell you the importance of that first year, you know, if, and I can't imagine, like, if my kid couldn't go to preschool because I had no money, and yet here I know that it's like one of the most important educational years of his life. Brain grows more when zero to five years old than any, anyway, I don't need to tell you all this. You know it! That's why you're here! That's why you're sitting up there! In any event, so I know this isn't on the agenda, and I really apologize that I'm bringing this to you with little notice, and I would just say in my defense, I've just, I learned a lot. I learned about this in town meeting, and then I, afterwards, I just started to ask more questions, like, is there still a need for, for a preschool? Or have all those kids gone elsewhere? So here's some things I learned. I learned that there's 31 kids on the Crocker Farm preschool list, on the waitlist. There's 15 kids on the Head Start waitlist. And the teacher of the preschool, which the parents, who the parents seem to adore, doesn't yet have another job and would be willing to continue with the preschool. In the budget, it was a $25,000 item, so I, now you'll say, well, there's no space. So here's the other thing. You'll see in the, in this memo, I went to look at, and Mr. Morris helped facilitate this with the buildings, facilities person to let us into the place where Summit Academy is vacating, the southeast campus. And that used to be a kindergarten many years ago, actually for many years. And it's still got like toilets that are little tiny toilets and little tiny water fons. And, and actually, the preschool teacher looked through the building, and a couple others of us did. I've met with a couple of parents. This could be a wonderful place for the preschool. And here's another thing that I learned about it. I learned from the, someone, one of the building inspectors, that this is, this would be a continuation of the same use as what's there now, because it's still educational, and as long as they're not younger than two, two years and nine months old, then it's the same use. And the program, that is, it's cut off, so that's fine. Another thing I learned is, this could actually really be beneficial to the town, because if you have a gap year at that location, then to restart anything there, you have to bring everything up to code. Probably a million dollars, maybe more. But right now, you don't have to bring everything up to code, as long as there's continuous use and it's the same use. So, so I'm putting this out there for you to get a heads up, for you, I know you can't vote, it's not on the agenda or anything like that, but I hope you might consider supporting it. The amount I was going to propose was $125,000. And here's why. It, the current year, it's $9,000 per kid. If it were going next year forward, they're talking, thinking about $10,000. But if you wanted to bring in like 10 children who won't get preschool, and, and, you know, there were estimates, there's at least 15, some, Mr. Morris was saying at least 15, I've heard from Head Start, it might be, you know, maybe half the eligible kids. So there's a lot of kids. And, and if there's a way to get, you know, 10 kids, 10 of those people who otherwise are staying at home to get preschool, I think that would be a really wonderful thing. And it would keep the options open for the town to use this building later. If you, I also heard from Head Start that having, one of the reasons why there's a dearth of preschool slots in general in our community is not enough preschool teachers, and you've got a stellar one who is going to be very sought after, but, but now, in the budget, every year, as those of you who are town meeting members, you know this, but every year, there's some amount of money that's left over that's put back into reserves. So basically, I'd be proposing that we take some of the money that would have been put back into reserves and use it instead to keep the preschool, to use this other location, and to let some of these kids who otherwise are going to stay home, which, you know, just stunts their whole academic life later on, like, and, and with a goal, like, this could just be a transitional year and then look for something else later, or maybe the goal, this could become a self-sustaining program. Because there's more space, you could hire another para or two, and then you could bring in more kids that could actually pay tuition, and that could, if you have kids paying full tuition, $10,000, they could help fund a sliding scale and some free slots. And I also think, if there's more awareness in the community, you know, perhaps the town would be willing to pay an extra, you know, on a regular basis, maybe an extra 50 or something, to realize that, like, why do we, we shouldn't let poverty stunt these kids. It's just, that's the worst place to have people cut just because they're poor. So thank you for listening to me, and I know I went longer than a couple of minutes, but I didn't go more than 10. I probably went more than my town meeting three. And I emailed all these materials to you, and, yeah, I, for those of you who are in town meeting, I hope you might consider supporting either, either the 125, or if someone were to come in with a smaller amount, like, it's only 25, I guess, to keep the program. Oh, and the 125 includes 10 free slots plus $25,000 for a van, because you want to make sure the kids who, whose parents don't have cars to drop them off can actually get there. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Any other public comments?
I know he thinks he's doing a great job. I don't know if this is the day, was there public comment, or was there like a place where we could have given information about evaluations who did miss that?
So we'll, we'll get to evaluations later in the agenda. Yeah, thank you very much. Yes, Mr. Demling?
We should probably just remind the public that once public comment is over, that we don't accept further comment as agenda items go on before.
I think you just did that.
Oh, yeah.
But thank you, Mr. Demling. Timely reminder. Okay, so we are closing public comments and moving on to the superintendent's update.
Yep. And I think, in the spirit of the weather, I'll try to be brief. It is super dark. I just, I know this is not necessarily the most professional thing to say, but first, last night, I felt like at 6:10, it felt like noon, and it does not feel like noon right now. It looks like noon.
Serious weather, yeah.
Yeah. So I'm just going to skip around some of the formal document and add something that's the bulleted point. So I just want to note that I just came from the middle school who had their Immigration Stories Project celebration, which was funded by AEF, the Direct Connection. That's a regional event, but I want to just point it out because we're talking about AEF funding, which was lovely. I mean, I would guess by the time I left, between people in the exhibit and watching the student presentations, there was 70, 75 people present. The students were fantastic. I was sad, loved to be with all of you, but sad to leave students telling their own personal immigration story from ancestral to their current, they are immigrants. And seeing the range of that was incredibly impressive. And the students' composure and poise, to talk about pretty heavy things, either in their life or their families. I know I couldn't have done that when I was a middle school student, so I was just impressed with the staff and the students for putting that together. And if you haven't seen it, it's worth seeing because it's incredibly visually beautiful to see the exhibit that Family Diversity Projects partnered with us on. For this year coming up, the AEF announced their excellence grants, and I'll only speak to the elementary one, which is an elementary garden-based learning grant. It was written by Jen Reese, who, those of you who've been on the committee a while, have gotten to meet before. She's the elementary science and garden coordinator across all three elementary schools. And it's really taking our gardening program to the next level in terms of integration into the curriculum, and looking at the gardening as a vehicle to talk about problem-solving and collaboration. So I'm not part of the selection process, and I'm certainly very excited for our students who get to benefit from that program moving forward, enhanced program moving forward, I should say. So thank you to AEF. Next Friday night, all of you are invited to Black Scholars Rising event in the middle school auditorium. And particularly powerful is the graduating seniors, the kinderstoles that they receive. Last Friday night, I was at, and I know some people in the audience were, and the rumor here as well, at the Latino Achievement Night. I was a parent who counted how many people were there, and he stopped at 300. So that was a good, great attendance, wonderful night. Much like, I want to correct my language from last meeting, my son really enjoyed it. There was no dragging involved. I felt guilty for saying that. He very much enjoyed, particularly the music and the dancing. That was a highlight for him, and following me up when I had to do the introductions, because he likes being on stage, if I'm up there with him. So he was very cute, but more seriously, it was a wonderful event. Incredible number of students on stage, and those who are getting honored at the transition grades, which is the way that one works, that, you know, kindergarten sixth, seventh, ninth, but also just students who came for the event and the connections that happen every year at it. So thank you to Dr. Guevara, who is the key person who organizes that event, along with others, but she is central. I think I'll actually, since some of these have been in the media, just talk about one other before I get to the bulleted point about the enrollment working group. Just something really neat, and our Susan Wells, who's a Wildwood librarian, has been working with Mike Caparello, who is an AV technician in the IS department. So he definitely, he's not an educator, he doesn't work with children. His job is, is to fix things and make things work essentially for adults and students, but she had students who were really interested during their enhancement block or their collaboration time, integration time, I should say, arts integration time, in, it's a number of students who are interested in building a 3D printer, and Mr. Caparello has a lot of experience with that. So just some, some really neat pictures and description on her blog, which we can send this digitally, just the hyperlink to. It's just really neat because it's not, we love our educators, but it's really neat to have someone who's not an educator talking about his real-world experience with technology with students. And that's actually a different relationship than the technology teachers have, which is wonderful, but really neat that our students get. It's almost like Shaba-like training, like they're like, how do you fix this? How did you, you know? And, and so it's wonderful to read and see. So I'm sorry to skip some, but in the name of time, I'm going to keep rolling. In terms of enrollment work, working group response update, the two things I'll share is, Dr. Brady, myself, actually Ms. Chamberlain, and CPAC President Nancy Stewart talked about kind of next steps for the special ed, specialized programs part of the enrollment working group update. And we still have to work on details, but what we are planning is to have a specific working group that takes the work of, now I don't know how to, there's too many, so the same word, capitalizes on the advancement that the enrollment working group did and all their work on that, and tries to get families from all three specialized programs in the different schools, and perhaps some from Crocker Farm who are not in the preschool, to be able to work, to come up with multiple options for myself and for the school committee's consideration in the fall. So I thought it was a great idea, and we'd have some staff involvement as well, both staff at the program level, but also, you know, people like Dr. Brady and Ms. Smith. So we're going to try to work on getting that going in the summer, so that some real next steps can be taken. I know I shared some initial thoughts with you the last two meetings, but I think it's the right process move, as well as the right, just the right move, to have people who are directly connected to the programs, looking at all the options. Ms. Stewart follows the meetings, so she's got a lot of the parameters of what's possible, what's not possible. So we're looking to have a separate group work on the specialized programs. The other update on that is, I think I mentioned this in the last meeting, but we had, by we, I mean, the principals, myself, Mr. Sheehan, Ms. Cunningham, had a video conference with Dr. Kristen Rodriguez, who was actually the facilitator of the enrollment working group, to think of this idea particularly for Wildwood and Crocker Farm. Fort River's definitely there, but thinking about the identity piece, because they don't have, there's not consideration at the moment for a dual-language program to go in. And so we are looking to move forward with her, again, to have a kind of a leadership team of staff members, families, as well as the principal involved in kind of a four-day, it actually mirrors some of the same model of having kind of some global process-based work, and then each team working independently and then sharing back. But I think a couple of the things that I found helpful from her description, I think I'll mention three. One was really a focus on a needs assessment, so it's not starting of like, that's cool, or we'd like to do that, but what are the actual needs of the building, and have that drive the conversation. And the second part is really getting clear on mission and vision, so that we have needs, we develop, what do we want to have? What's the vision of the school? And the last one I want to mention is around communication, that, that it should be an iterative process, that yes, there may be a leadership group, because it's impossible for 80 people to be working on this simultaneously, but there's feedback loops, and it, you know, there's a leadership group that goes back to the parent networks, staff networks, and there's, and, and it would take, you know, much like the enrollment working group, take the better part of eight or nine months before we get to a place of, a direction that we want, they want to propose. But I thought that model worked really, my experience was, worked really well with the enrollment working group, even though the content's different, the process pieces have a lot of similarities. I think the last thing I'll say is that she really emphasized a focus in implementation science, that a lot of these things sound good and people get really excited, and it doesn't look much different except like a fancier newsletter, or this one-off kind of thing, the experience that students have. And when, as things are getting developed, that's towards the end of her role in the process, really focusing on how do you get broad stakeholder input, and you talked about, and support, when I talked about communication, but also, how do you actually make this thing happen? Whatever it is, whatever it is, if we don't talk about how to implement it effectively over time in kind of the right-sized pieces, it won't be effective. So it was a really good conversation. Our team, as always, is really candid, as is Dr. Rodriguez, so it's a good working relationship already. And some people like Ms. Chamberlain and Ms. Cunningham already had a relationship from the enrollment working group. So more soon on that. We're working on fine-tuning, if we can get dates, then we can do a call-out for volunteers, both on the parent side and the staff side. But I think it was a highly productive conversation of moving all of our schools forward. And I don't want to minimize Fort River's there, Ms. Chamberlain was there, and the intent is to have all schools participate, but I think it was of, it feels different when there's multiple things under consideration of Fort River versus Wildwood and Crocker Farm at the moment. So that's the update of where we are moving forward.
Okay. Mr. Demling?
And I just, you said you're still thinking about timelines and all that, but could you maybe just like talk about broad ballpark?
Sure.
Timeline, given, again, I thought I said ad nauseam, I feel like I broke a record about all the other things going on.
Absolutely.
You want to make sure that if the theme and identity of Crocker is changing?
Right.
And it's going to implement on X date that people are.
Yeah, no, I should have added that. So I think actually the timeline we're loosely talking about of Dr. Rodriguez's work with us would mirror pretty closely the enrollment working group with some dates, excuse me, some dates in the summer and then a couple of dates in the fall. But much like the enrollment working group, that's not the end of the core work. It's the end of Dr. Rodriguez's support of that work. And I think our initial thinking was to have something really formalized by kind of late winter, early spring. And the idea of that is, there might be budgetary implications for the following school year. So we want to make sure that we have some solid sense of where we are with that, so if there are budgetary implications, it can be included in the budget process. More, to find a point on your question about implementation, you know, these kind of changes, according to her, you want to map out a multi-year transition, you know, so if there are going to be, like, you know, a clear identity or focus for a school, it doesn't happen in fall, right? As opposed to dual-language, because it actually is a structural change, it sort of has to happen on a timeline that way, whereas these, and Ron Berger, who also worked with many of our schools in Expert Share Learning, has a lot of experience with this, that you want to think of a multi-year plan, communicate a multi-year plan, so everyone's more clear than you would be from hearing me talk right now of, this is the direction, and this is what that looks like in year one, and that's, this is what it looks like in year two, and here's the iterative feedback loops along the way. So when I talk about implementation science, that's really being clear, both on the communication, but also the implementation, that things, we're big, messy, wonderful, complex organizations, and to make any kind of change, you want to make sure you're right sizing the pace of change with the, the gravity of change in the size of the organization. Sorry, I was really wordy. Yeah.
Any other questions or comments for Dr. Morris?
So as a member of the enrollment working group, the one thing that came to mind while we were talking about this was just the concern that the sessions, especially the initial ones, where there were two days in the summer, you know, I was, I was home, I wasn't working because I was with my son at that time, and so that made it, it was still difficult, but possible for me to participate. And I know that there are probably going to be plenty of working parents, and also people who may not have childcare. So is there anything we can do this time around to try to encourage participation by the folks who would otherwise be eliminated, or maybe what you were talking about with the communication piece, about trying to have multi, multiple ways of getting involved? I really, I think the enrollment working group did excellent work. It just, it was self-selected population, and a lot of academics who were able to be there over the summer, which is, I think, really helped, because we were doing research, but it would be nice to just see if we could get a more diverse group this time around.
I understand. So I agree with you. I think, do you think this will feel different in terms of who wants to participate? The enrollment working group, like even the name of it is like complex, and people don't understand what it means, where it's like, if we're thinking, we're still working on nomenclature, but if it's about your child's direct school, we're hoping that that is a draw for less academic people, perhaps than with the enrollment working group, which felt really big and messy, I'm going to use that word again, but I think it's true at the beginning. And so that's one thing. I think the second thing is absolutely, we're aware, and we had lots of conversations with Dr. Rodriguez internally about that. And I think it is a luxury to, you know, if you think of just the hours that she'll be here, let alone the other work, you know, talking about 18, 20 hours in people's lives, and that's a luxury. And it may not have felt that way at every moment for people in the enrollment working group, but it is a luxury to be able to have with the complexity of families' lives. And so this is not to say we're not trying to make that group more diverse, we are, but incumbent on us is, what's the feedback loop? And what is, how are people who don't have 20 hours in their lives to dedicate to the work? How is their voice included? So I think it's not a either-or, it's a yes-and. How does a group more diverse, and for, for the limitations that we may have of that, how does everyone stay involved in it? So we talked a little bit about open houses or curriculum nights being a place where we get a high level of foot traffic from people who may not be in the school that many other times of the year, and how do we integrate, you know, feedback loops in, when we have a captive audience, which for families, that's usually our, our best ticket. So, sorry, it's a complex answer, but I wanted to just share the, that we have been talking about and trying to work through the challenges that you accurately cite.
Great.
So just one thought that has struck me is, I think I had raised this at one point in one of our previous meetings, but, you know, the, the need to over-communicate with the community, right, which you're just touching on right now. But I'm wondering if it would be possible for, you know, for Dr. Morris and for others, you know, whether it's, you know, with the help of Mabe or whoever else, to sketch out sort of an engagement plan in addition to an implementation plan. It's also, you know, loosely thinking about the questions that Ms. Spitzer just raised, and that, you know, that, that we've raised at different points. Because I think if we can put something to paper, and even if it's not perfect, and share that out with the community, people then understand that there is a plan in place to engage them and to have them think about this and provide some input. I also would say that I think using some of the tools, you know, in much the same way what you mentioned about taking advantage of meetings and all that, thinking about the newsletters and other options, right? Because this really is, I think, a huge opportunity for people to really, you know, sort of connect in to what's currently happening and what's about to happen in ways that they may not have realized before, right? And so we want to make sure that they're, you know, getting every opportunity that they can to, to think about this.
I agree. Thank you. It's really helpful.
Any other comments or questions? Mr. Demling?
Free pizza and daycare always helps for those elementary kids. I can tell from personal experience.
Yeah. I saw the food be a draw, not small, not nearly an hour ago. Yeah. We got the flavor probably on my tongue, so, yeah.
All right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'm going to move us on to the next order of business, which is the FY18 budget update. And who's presenting this? This is Mr. Mangano?
I'm going to call up Mr. Mangano. This is in your packet. There's a memo, one, two, three, the fourth page in.
Are we skipping the reorganized piece?
Yes. We're skipping it, yes. Sorry.
It's a little late, sorry.
That's okay.
Okay, so this is a follow-up on the quarter three budget report framers. That report highlighted the need for additional funds this year to cover the increases for health insurance and special education costs. We've got some new information in the last couple of weeks, and so we've thought about what is sort of the best source for those additional funds, and I think what we've settled on is additional school choice funds. And the reason why is that our school choice revenues, what we projected to bring in this year, we get information on school choice revenues a couple of times a year, we get it in December, and then we also get an update, we get a final in June, and then we get some tidbits of information from our own internal reporting between that time. And one of those tidbits of internal reporting is called a school claims report, and that's where we report sort of the school choice cost to the state, and that really drives the reimbursement. A little refresher, school choice, there's a $5,000 base for each student that comes in, and then there's an additional noun above that for students with special education needs. And so the school choice claims piece is really about the students with special education needs. What's that additional reimbursement above the $5,000 that's going to come in for the year? So we've seen that portion of our school choice revenues go up by about $70,000 from December to now. The December is really more of an estimate, the state gets that information from us once a year. So the December estimate was a little low, or quite a bit low, so the, the numbers we just got were about $70,000 higher. And we think using those funds would make sense to cover our increased costs, it's one of those increased costs of special education needs in the district. On the backside of the little narrative I wrote for you, has a little snapshot of the school choice revolving fund, which is in a really healthy place right now. You can see our revenues have consistently been greater than our expenses for the last several years. The FY19, where it looks like it's a little bit less, we're probably, the revenues will probably come in higher with the new information that we got in April, because that was reflective of the December report, and now that we know those revenues are coming a little bit higher, that'll probably go up a little bit, too. And the green line is our fund balance. So the fund balance in the school choice revolving fund to start this year was about $700,000. Let me just confirm. $638,000, sorry, to start the year. And if, so if we didn't use any additional funds, and we just went with where we are right now, the balance at the end of the year would be 700, or sorry, it'd be, that right now, the balance at the end of the year would be seven hundred, sorry, that would be eight hundred thousand if we, sorry, I'm getting my numbers mixed up here. Sorry, so it started six hundred and thirty thousand, if we went forward with no additional funds this year, the ending balance would be eight hundred and thirty thousand. If we did use the additional seventy thousand, or eighty thousand that we're requesting, the ending balance at the end of the year would be seven hundred and fifty thousand, which is still more than a year's worth of revenues, which is what we try to target for a balance is at least a year's worth of revenues in that fund. Any questions?
Mr. Demling?
School's choice, I don't know what it is about it, but for me, it's one of those topics that I never 100.0% understand. So I always feel like I'm asking the same question, but that's more my own shortcomings. So basically, the reason why you don't want to access a exceptionally large portion of your school choice balance, correct me if I'm wrong, this is my understanding, is that you're, you're basically hedging against the possibility that your future school choice might decline. And so because you're banking on the fact that this is part of our budget, revenue stream, and you don't know what the future holds, you can estimate, that it's not prudent to draw it down if it, if the numbers come in. Is that, is that the basic?
Yeah, you don't know what your future enrollment's going to look like, so you don't want to be dependent on too much, and then have your future enrollment numbers drop, because then you have to cut back. So you don't want to really build future increases off of a number you don't think is sustainable.
Good. Mr. Demling?
Yeah, follow-up. So is there like, like a formula to sort of, I would imagine that like, you know, as you're, as you're looking at what the proper amount is to, you know, you want to find this like Goldilocks zone of not too much, but not too little, that you're drawing off of, is there like a recommended way to approach that? I'm sure all schools go through the same kind of problem.
Yeah, I mean, I haven't heard of anything perfect. I think the two things we try to do is, one, we try not to use more than we think we're bringing in, so that the balance, or not significantly, I mean, if it's a little bit here and there, but we try not to significantly use more and build a sort of a structural deficit that we've heard about in some other districts. And the other thing is, we try to keep at least a year's worth of balance in there, so if we ever have to phase out the school choice program, or if we have a bad year, that there's a balance that we can sort of stabilize, have some time to sort of glide into a sustainable level. In Pelham, that's really helped us, having a year's worth of balance, because we sort of saw this, where we had our numbers drop, and because we had that fund balance, we were able to sort of glide to a sustainable level as opposed to cutting it off all at once. So those are sort of the two things. I haven't heard of any sort of like specific rule of, here's how much you should use, it's really dependent on what you think the future is for school choice. I know this year, we're at our highest number of kids for the school choice program. I think the demand was really strong, and we don't anticipate a drop in the number for next year, so, yeah, those are some of the things we think about.
Sorry, I just have a question on how to read this, this graph.
Sure.
So the revenue is the revenue from school choice?
Yep.
And the expenses are the expenses for?
That's how much we're using to support, or that's how much of the school choice balance we're using for expenses that year. So every year, we decide some amount of school operating expenses that we pay from the school choice fund, and that number goes up or down based on the budget year. So the pink bar is how much is coming in in revenue, the blue bar is how much is going out to support expenses, it usually supports classroom teacher expenses, and then the green line is the fund balance.
Okay. So the proposed, that you're showing, and what we're voting on or talking about is FY18, not the proposed FY19?
Right, yeah. FY, so the FY18 figure here shows what it'd look like if we used the $80,000 more.
Got it.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So, Mr. Mangano, I have a question for you, actually, because I think in the, excuse me, the memo that you prepared, it said that special education costs exceeded the original budget by more than $100,000. So where does the additional $20,000 come from? Because you're only requesting 80.
Right, so there's other areas in the budget we've frozen this year, not specifically for special education, but specifically really for the health insurance issue. So we've frozen pretty much all of our budget, non, sort of essential items, we've frozen. So you'll see expense accounts from schools to central office, staffing, we've tried to sort of limit, when positions have come vacant, we try to fill them as efficiently as we can. So there's other savings that are making up the difference for that $20,000.
So you're expecting to be able to make up the difference from those frozen?
Yeah, yeah, the $80,000 we think is the most we'll need. So we hope to come in even less than the $80,000, so we're asking for up to $80,000. We're hoping to come in less by the end of the year, but it's just, there's a couple months left, and we want to sort of have a number to plan with.
I have one more follow-up question. So next year, would we plan on making up that difference again, or, you know?
Right, so, so next year, so the amount we're asking for is still less than what we're using for next year, so that just shows that we still have quite a bit of cushion. So the number we're using for next year is in line with what we're expecting to bring in for revenues, so that's sort of the number we're going to try to stay at unless we see numbers, the choice numbers go up or down. We can try to make it up, we could try to, I mean, if the school budget looks like it's coming in in a good way, we could try to use less school choice funds next year to make up the difference. We've done that in Pelham, for example. So that could be an option if next year's budget is in a good position.
If I could just add, just the thing I want to make sure the committee, and Mr. Mangano said it, but I want to be super clear on, is that by doing this, it means we would not be asking the select board to tap the special ed stabilization fund, which was approved, and we put funds in last year. And so some of our thinking and decision-making around that was if we were able to do this within, given the choice and given this last information, which is just a week or two old about the increase in choice revenue, it, I think preserves what we said we were going to do about the special ed reserve fund, that we would only tap it if essentially that was the only fiscally sound option, and given this pleasant surprise and a year of unpleasant fiscal surprises, we feel like it's the responsible thing to do, because it doesn't negatively, we feel like it's fiscally sound, and it's consistent with what we said when we spoke at town meeting last year, as well as with the select board. And so that, that's the shift that, from what we talked about in the April meeting, is that we're intentionally, you know, our recommendation is not to go down that road, because we feel comfortable with where we are with choice revenue. So, sorry, I just wanted to make sure that was.
Thank you.
Stated.
Mr. Demling?
Is, is school choice a net, I feel like the obvious answer to this is yes, but a net add to the budget always, because it is only 5,000 a student, but then it gets adjusted with certain special ed expenses?
So I can start?
Sure.
Or you would, you could start.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think I know what you're saying. When we use school choice, we use it to top off classrooms, so we try across the board to not add additional expenditures, like additional classroom teachers or staff. The one exception is special education, because you have to meet the needs of that student, so if that student requires additional staffing, then you have to do it, but you get reimbursed through school choice. But in general, we try not to add additional expenses to the budget when we take school choice students in. I mean, there's things like food and supplies that are sort of marginal, but sort of the big costs are, we don't add to the budget. Was that your question?
Yeah. It looked like he was.
Yeah, no, I'm just sort of thinking big picture, you know, so we get reimbursed for the special ed expenses, you know, that's all good, and, I mean, you know, I hear, I hear in general about, you know, our stellar reputation for special ed services, and one of my kids experienced that directly, and, you know, that was very positive, and that's, I'm just wondering if, if a higher percentage of students that are choicing in may be motivated by the special ed programs affects that, that budget variable or not?
So we noticed different trends different years, we also noticed significantly different trends based on what grade students enter in. What we'll notice is that the, when students enter any of our school districts at typical transition years, the demographics are more reflective of the general population. When it's in atypical transition years, it's often less demographically similar to our general population, and I'm speaking more not just about special needs, although inclusive of that. And so we've had a lot of internal conversations this year, just about the relationships and how, how different it feels for choice students entering in, and we've had great success stories of students entering in at fifth grade, right? I'm not pretending that that doesn't exist, but in general, when we build a seven-year relationship with choice families, that feels a little different than it's a one- or two-year relationship with choice families. So we actively talk about the very issue that you cite. I think our reputation, I think what you said is true, right? Like, as a teacher, going back now quite a few years, I had families who, they weren't choice families, we didn't have choice then, but said, oh, I moved from, I remember one in particular, I'll say it now, it would be identifiable, somewhere in California, specifically because we were looking for, you know, an area, we liked college towns, and something that had really wonderful special needs services. And the flip side is, there's also just as many families who, in my opinion, who come because they said, we love your low class sizes, we love that you have arts programs, and like a robust art program like that, we love that kids go into the middle school, right, and we want to get into the elementary schools. We just did a robust choice survey, asked in Pelham, and I know it's a different community, and it was interesting, because the same kind of question that you asked was asked by their school committee, and I'm not pretending the answer's exactly the same, but the range of responses was broader than what I would have thought, and I think the committee expected as well. So I do think the special needs is something to think about, but I think there's a great number. And I say, the other thing that comes up a lot in Amherst anecdotally is families who demographically don't, perhaps want to have other families like them in their communities, and sometimes in this community, that's families of color, that's families who, that both parents share the same gender identity, right? So there's a whole range of responses, so, you know, what I learn and what I experience is, is the range is, is quite large. Sorry, that was long-winded. Think about this stuff a lot.
Just to add to that, I think that, you know, the school choice program, I think, is actually, you know, almost like a badge of honor, if you will, for our district, because there are so many people that, you know, the families that want to send their students here, and so that's a, that's a wonderful thing, but it is, there is a tension there, right? And you guys have talked about this so much, about making sure that you're not overextending our resources to support, you know, students and families coming from other districts, even if it provides some additional revenue. So with that, there is a motion. I'll take a motion, and then we can discuss some more afterwards, but maybe that just can help us move along, if that makes sense to everybody.
Sure. I move to authorize the use of up to $80,000 more from the school choice revolving fund to cover increased fiscal year 18 special education costs and increased health insurance costs.
Great, can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Mr. Demling?
Thank you for your answers, it was very enlightening. I mean, that's a seren-
Thank you.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so the next item is the superintendent evaluation instrument. This tool was voted on and approved at the regional school committee level last week, but we can discuss this further here at the Amherst School Committee. But first, I'm going to take a motion before I ask Dr. Morris to share any thoughts he has on compiling the artifacts for committee discussion, and before we discuss, that really is sort of the best practice, I think, right, to take motions, and then we can, we can talk about this. So does anybody want to make a motion? Mr. Demling?
I move to approve the superintendent evaluation instrument.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. Okay, so maybe Dr. Morris, you'd want to kick us off on some of your thinking, because I know that there was very, last year, when we were talking about the evaluation tool, we had some very specific, you know, ideas and things that came, because it was a sort of a different approach than had been done previously. So maybe for the new members of the committee, we can share what that is.
Absolutely. So what the three committees have decided to do is-
And I'm sorry, can you just name?
Oh, sorry, thank you, absolutely. So the Amherst Pelham Regional School Committee, the Amherst School Committee, and the Pelham School Committee, so those are my three employers. And what they've opted to do is to, I think, try to make the best of the fact that, in many ways, we function as one district, and in other ways, we don't function as one district, and that many members of one committee also sit on a different committee. So what has been developed are the goals that were approved by each committee, I think it was January this year, roughly, and Ms. Westmoreland, actually, was the one who worked on this, because the representative of the evaluation subcommittee was Ms. Hazard, who is off doing something else on a Tuesday night right now. So, but fortunately, we had the goals already approved, and we had the format sort of already done, so thank you, Ms. Westmoreland, for your work on this. And really, was to try to connect the goals that were approved to specific standards and elements in the superintendent rubric, and the approach has been, based on feedback a couple of years ago, that instead of using the whole rubric, to really focus in on not just the goals, but actually, but the, the element that surrounds the goals. So when you see the artifact document that I've been working on, it's going to, similar to last year, it's going to include specific information about the goals, but also more broadly, like if you look at, for instance, you know, one of the ones that's connected is element 1B3, diverse learners' needs, and it's connected to the social justice professional development goal and the homework goal, but there's going to be other things around diverse learners' needs and the work of the district that's going to be included in that, to give the committee, each committee sufficient information to consider, and the way the document looks is it's a narrative component with hyperlinks that are the artifacts. So some of the feedback I got from a couple of years ago was, the committee needed context by which to understand the artifacts, so the narrative component, and we talked about this last spring, seemed to work effectively for the committee's work. The other thing that I'm planning to do, similar to last year, based on feedback from two of the three committees, was to have one artifact document that describes the work across all three committees, because so much of the work is consistent, and I'm trying to, with Ms. Westmoreland's help, again, Ms. Westmoreland, thank you, be a little more clear on highlighting when it's in work that happened in the Amherst Elementary School, the Pelham Elementary School, both of those, which actually this year, atypically, actually, there was a lot of joint work in terms of the homework goal, and some other ones, and then other ones that are region, and then some are just purely district-wide, like the communication plan, for instance, was pre-k to 12 at all schools, or all districts. So it's trying to create a document. I'm getting close to being done with that document, and it'll be presented at the regional meeting next Tuesday for your consideration, so I think, one of the things, because Amherst isn't scheduled to meet again for quite a while, just with the scheduling, is that just figuring out the timeline for the Amherst Public Schools, and making sure that the committee has what it needs to do what it wants to do in a reasonable timeline. But the artifact document, while it won't be in Amherst School, it's not currently slated to be in Amherst School Committee meeting, should be out to all committees next Tuesday.
Any questions or comments for the superintendent? Mr. Demling?
You know, the comment sections are interesting to me, because there's, it's such a free form for the evaluator, and it's not like I've evaluated 100 superintendents in my past life, so, and I know we've only been through this for one year, and the instrument was different, but what kind of like comments are helpful to you? Like, if we're trying to give you constructive feedback, right, not just justify our checkboxes, but give you something that you can actually use, I mean, we have so many other opportunities to give you feedback, like right now, in other means of communication, just wondering in this particular context, what you find helpful.
So, yeah, the feedback that I found really helpful last spring, on both, you know, affirming things that have happened, as well as more critical feedback, is feedback that leads into things that can happen in the next school year. Doesn't mean it has to be that way, but for me personally, there were some critical pieces of feedback in last year's evaluation that then drove the work of this year, and that's why we're trying to still figure out exactly the timing of how to not lose momentum, have an evaluation in June, and then talk about goals in like October, or, I mean, excuse me, September, or late August, because, you know, the gap of time is probably too long, you know, so I kept it, I felt like it kept the momentum going from the feedback, but it feels a little different meeting two months later. But I'm always kind of looking for feedback that helped me improve my practice, and the most, the best way I know to improve my practice is that feedback that's, and by actionable, I think there's a gray area, right? It's not like, well, you should do X, right? But it's more, you know, some of the feedback I got were, in next year, maybe good to continue that goal. Ms. Ordones, for instance, you know, really, I think, was helpful in helping me construct goals that were connected to prior goals, because they were, you know, not continuations of the work in the way, the negative way people might think of continuations, but they were related, that there was a multi-year, it was a clear multi-year approach. So that was really, just as a tangible example, it's sticking in my head of feedback. And also, on the, because those are more critical ones, on the positive side, I think much of, and I'm like any other educator, we don't often, no one comes to work for the praise, right? You'd find a different career if that was your career choice, and I'm not looking for praise necessarily, and so there's this whole kind of in-education circles, there's praise and encouragement. So praise is like, you did a great job on X. Encouragement is, I thought the way that you approached X ended up with a good result because you did Y, right? And that, for me personally, like most educators, and that's when we're trying to norm our practice of offering feedback to educators at any level, we really think about that praise versus encouragement piece, because what research would indicate is the encouragement, it actually works for parenting as well, the encouragement ends up being much more substantive in letting someone know what you actually like. Like, you know, for instance, if I was going to say, Ms. Ordones' feedback was great last year, you should just copy her, like, what does that actually mean? So I'm trying to model, right? It's like, that feedback was helpful because it helped me think about multi-year, you know, goals, and therefore, right? And so that's the kind of feedback that I think all educators yearn for, and probably don't receive enough, frankly.
Any other comments or attachments from other committee members?
Just a quick one, I shouldn't assume, but I'm, so I'm going to ask, but similar to the, the region evaluation, because I was not part of the committee before, for the period that we're evaluating, we won't fill this out, or we, we shouldn't fill this out, but can participate in the conversation, is that?
Mr. Demling?
So it wasn't exactly our position last year, and we had a lot of meetings and discussions, and what we eventually came to was, when you're on the committee, you have as much right as anybody else to fill out however much of the evaluation instrument you want right as anybody else to fill out however much of the evaluation instrument you want to, you feel you, you feel is appropriate. The only restriction is that it needs to be based on your experience while you're on the committee, not on your past experiences, parent or whomever. And so last year, I opted to participate in the discussion, and I opted not to, because I had the ability to, but I opted not to fill out the evaluation, so.
Thank you, Mr. Dumling.
Thank you.
But, you know, you should feel free to do whatever you think is appropriate.
So, yes, I think Mr. Dumling took the words right out of my mouth. So, you know, I think it is up for discussion, right, you know, however we want to handle this evaluation, but that is what we have all decided, is that, you know, we can, individual members can participate in the evaluation to the degree that they feel comfortable, and if you would like to go through the entire thing and fill out, you know, that's totally fine. Usually what the chair does is will go and collect all of the information and all of the results, and create a summative, you know, response. And so that is what ends up getting shared back publicly that, you know, people can look at, so, if that makes sense. I think maybe what we're missing is just, so you mentioned presenting next Tuesday to the regional school committee, can we have a discussion just about the Amherst School Committee, because we sort of cut that short? Unless, Ms. McDonald, do you have another follow-up question, or I thought I heard you were starting to...
I did, but it's, it's very minor.
Of course, yeah.
So there's, but there's just one form that, and you're shaking your head, so no, it's like, fill it out twice for, I mean, there's two separate evaluation streams, so one is sort of looking specifically at the lens of, with the elementary schools, and a separate stream that is looking at the, the regional schools.
Yeah, so this is what, what Dr. Morris was referring to in the beginning, about having the three different committees and having, you know, sort of three different, he's, he's just preparing one artifact, one set of different pieces that we will use for our evaluation, but there are three different actual tools that we will be given. So it'll be sent, what it's going to look like practically is three different links that the different committees will get, depending on which committee they sit on. Is that still the way it's working? Does that mean, yes. So we will get two separate, on the Amherst School Committee, we'll get two separate emails for the Amherst School Committee, and then one for the Amherst Region School Committee. Anything you wanted to add to that, Dr. Morris?
No, I guess the question is, for you all to consider, is given your meeting schedule, I can imagine a couple of different scenarios for you to consider in terms of timeline. One is that, since I'm presenting the artifact document, I mean, when I say presenting, I'm using, presenting is really sharing it, it's actually not, if you have individual questions, they follow up individually, it's really just walking committee members through the structure and organization, it's not a full two or three hour presentation that I would need to present all the work of the district over this year in these domains. So I guess the question that I had was, does the Amherst School Committee need to meet, or can they follow a similar timeline as region and Pelham, because they'll be receiving the document at the same time? I don't have a strong feeling, I don't have a preference, it's just a question I want to ask, because I don't think, we could do a joint posting of that agenda item as Amherst Region, but it's really just a process discussion, it's not a, you know, what about this in the Amherst, that's not, the presentation is lowercase p-present, yeah, it'll be a five to 10 minute budget, item on the regional agenda, it won't be like a full bore presentation that you've, you may have seen on other topics.
So what does the committee think? Mr. Dumling?
Yeah, I'd be comfortable with just having it in the region, it's not like you're going to, like you said, go into 20 minutes of elementary-specific content that would not be appropriate to the region, it's just the document. Yeah, it would seem a little redundant to have a meeting that we're saying, oh, here's the document again.
Does it sound okay to everybody?
Agreed.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so we still need to take a vote. So if there's no further questions or comments, all those in favor? Okay, it's unanimous, thank you very much. Okay, so the next item is a regionalization board update, so, Mr. Dumling, do you want to bring everybody up to speed?
Sure, and I'll just give you the 10-second recap for any of the public that is listening to this topic for the first time, because that's half the reason to have it on the agenda. Elementary, pre-K to six, Pelham and Amherst are exploring the possibility of regionalizing into a new school district, and so we have a six-member board, three from members, three from Pelham, and we are meeting at this point once every two weeks. And we are going through the process essentially of first defining what our process is going to be, we have a regionalization grant, regionalization and efficiency grant from the state, in order to fund a consultant to guide us through the, sort of two pieces, the user engagement piece, and also the analytical piece, in terms of what questions we need to ask, is this a win-win for Pelham and Amherst, to we, and how do we frame that information? So last meeting, we heard from a representative from the Collins Center, as a possible consultant option, I've also reached out to other superintendents and school committees in the area who have done different regionalization studies, there's not many, many comparables to our situation of two districts that are already very familiar with each other and very well-linked, that are considering merging. Regionalization is a multifaceted topic, I'm learning with a lot of different variations. But that being said, superintendents have been very helpful, reaching out and talking, everybody loves to talk about their process, particularly if it's been a successful one, so. So basically, we are trying to decide what our consultant is going to be, and then also we've begun to sort of scope out a general timeline, I think we'll get that, more into that next Tuesday. It's, we've had some initial comments that the summer is not the most perfect time to get super-high community feedback, you know, for obvious reasons, and so we've had this sort of just broad-based initial idea of, you know, there's some sort of analytical pieces we need to dig into, so the committee itself feels very well-versed in the topics and knows which questions to ask, because one of the challenges, particularly in Amherst, that we've talked about is scope, and one of our favorite things to bring up is how many things are going on at the same time, and the cognitive load, and we have a change in government in Amherst, a lot of, a lot of things going on. And so to make sure that everybody knows exactly, you know, what's at stake here, and does not feel surprised if there's a recommendation one way or the other towards the end is very important. So it looks like maybe the summer will be our analytical time, and then we'll sort of get all our ducks in a row, and then hit the ground running in the fall, and have that be our big user engagement time, where we're going out, trying to get as much feedback from the community in different, different manners, different forms, and hopefully be able to make some kind of a recommendation in the spring-ish timeframe, but that's still really broad brush stroke out. And we certainly brought up the idea that we want to be able to meet with the school committees, this committee, as well as the Pelham School Committee, multiple occasions to make sure that everybody is very well keyed in, because if the board does recommend regionalization, it means the dissolving of this committee, as well as the Pelham School Committee, so it's, it would be a big change. So, so we have definitely talked about it. The school committee is at the top of our list of constituents to engage in the process.
So, just a follow-up question on that, do you think that would happen during the summer, or is that in the fall?
So, my one year on the committee, we haven't met a lot in the summer months, you know, I think we would have to pretty much work around the school committee's availability. I don't, I don't imagine...
We still do have a couple of meetings that we usually end up doing during the summer, so...
Oh, yeah, okay.
You know, but it's just a question, because you said that there was, you're sort of focusing on analytics during the summer, and then community engagement in the fall. I mean, it could make sense to wait until the fall, so then you could have, the school committee be a part of that discussion, that public discussion, but it's just a question.
Yeah, it's, I mean, we've really, it's on the agenda for next Tuesday to talk about, so we've, but we'll certainly dive in according on that, on those themes.
Okay.
Come back with another update.
Any questions or comments on that topic? Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Dumling. Okay, so the next item is a Fort River feasibility study building committee update. I have to use the full name, because I feel like, when we shorten it, it just causes confusion, so, the Fort River feasibility study building committee update. Dr. Morris, Mr. Nakajima is not here today, maybe you can fill us in a little bit?
Yeah, and I'll just, this will be brief as well, to Mr. Dumling's, I think, nice introduction, so this was, the feasibility committee was formed last year at town meeting when they approved $250,000. The idea is that the committee will sunset at the end of studying this, it's not a committee that stays through, you know, if the project was to move forward, it's really just to get options, not just do, but it's focused on getting options on the initial part of what would be a full study. And so our request proposals came out, I think Mr. Nakajima shared that at the last meeting, and so there was recently a pre-bid walkthrough, and there were six attendees from six different firms, architectural firms, who came. Bids are due on Wednesday, May 30th, and the, there will be an interview, subcommittee of the feasibility committee, and they're looking about roughly June 11th to complete interviews of them. These proposals will be really thick, so there'll be a lot to review in a short amount of time. But at that point, after the interviews, prior to this, there's a meeting, there was a meeting, may still be going on tonight at 6 o'clock, so there may be things, there are things being discussed that I'm not aware of. But they're trying to think of criteria, who would be on the evaluation subcommittee, what criteria to use in that process, and at the end of that, you know, a final is chosen, and contract negotiations begin to take next steps. But that's the rough timeline, and the core work of getting the request proposals out, which was great, is out, and the timeline of when they come in, and then the interview process. So hopefully wrapped up by the end of June, with getting that piece, and then I think we'll see things, in my opinion, accelerate a bit, because once we have designers on board, we'll have a lot of next steps to take.
Well, it's great to have dates on the calendar.
Yes.
To know that we're working towards, so, makes me feel better. Any thoughts or comments on that update? No? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so the next item is in response to, it's the FY19 budget adjustment discussion, I feel like that needs maybe a little bit of explanation. So it's in response to the recent vote by town meeting to add an additional $15,000 to the Amherst school budget for the purposes of after-school programming, and we're bringing it to the committee tonight for discussion. Dr. Morris, I don't know if you have any thoughts you want to share with us about this budget decision, how you're thinking about it, and then maybe we can just open it up for thoughts.
Yeah, I think the first thing is, I would just frame it as in, when the chair and I talked about it, it's intentionally listed as discussion, you know, there's no, at least in my opinion, no urgency to vote tonight. And the chair and I spoke, and there were some really good questions asked at town meeting that I didn't have the, we didn't have the answers to, and so I've gathered those, so I think I just want to share that information with the committee tonight for your discussion, and see if there's other questions that you'd like me to gather. And I really want to thank Dwayne Chamble, who is our out-of-school-time coordinator, who works, as you'll find out, with many different programs, with many different organizations, and trying to make sense of it all, Dwayne does seemingly effortlessly, which I would not, so thanks, I want to publicly thank Dwayne for the, not just the work he does for students, and the before-school and after-school, but, you know, just, as compared to what we do from 8:00 to 3:30, there's one organization, there's some structures that are similar, I think, after-school, before-school, everyone's working incredibly well and doing great work for kids, but not everyone's working under the same roof, so to speak. Yeah, I'll leave it there. So, so one of the questions that we had was, how many students use the vouchers that we offer at the elementary schools? And there's a total of 64 students who use the vouchers at the elementary school. The second question Dwayne and I talked about are, we'll get more detailed about that number in a second, do each of the after-school programs have their own vouchers that they offer, and if so, how many are used, and what are the differences? And so each program does have its own, does not have their own vouchers, they actually have vouchers from other places. So a distinction is that we have, you know, the funding support from, that has been, the committee has offered, is us giving vouchers, the other vouchers that the programs offer, they apply for, and the vouchers come from an external source, they're not coming from the actual program. So for instance, Kapasi Dodd, which is the after-school program at Fort River, and the LSC after-school program, which is at Crocker Farm, they both take vouchers from families under what's called the New England Farm Workers Council, it's the same group that, if you remember our preschool discussion a while back, and the vouchers, it's the same organization. They're different from ours, that they're furnished by the state, and our, as I said, our vouchers are furnished from our district, and the families bring the vouchers to their respective program, and the program in turn submits all the documents to state for reimbursement. It's, instead of, the families are centrally involved and supported to get the vouchers and work on them. So at Kapasi Dodd, there's three vouchers this year currently being used from the New England Farm Workers Council, and the LSC program at Crocker Farm, there's eight vouchers currently being used. What's different is at Mark's Meadow After School, which is the program at Wildwood, hopefully some of you are new enough in Amherst where that doesn't, isn't confusing, but Perry's not one of them.
My son was in it, so...
Right, exactly, but Mark's Meadow used to be a school, the after-school program has continued out to Wildwood, so the nomenclature for old people like me gets confusing. So they actually have an EEC, which is an early education care, which is a state-funded program where they have 13 subsidy vouchers for families. So the families there apply directly with Jana at Mark's Meadow, and once approved, Jana, who's the head of the program, will support all the paperwork, submit all the paperwork to the state for reimbursement. So not only is it a different source, a different amount, but actually it's slightly different structure that the New England Farm Workers Council, we can support people, but the vouchers, the families are centrally involved in getting them, whereas at Mark's Meadow one, it's a little more supported. So the total enrollments in each program, there's, the thing I want to know when I say these numbers is, it's variable by day, this is the total number, so when I say the number, it's really large, and any given day, it can be 75 to 80% of that number. So total number of students across the three schools is 338 students who are in our after-school programs. There's, as I said, 64 students who are receiving our after-school subsidy assistance, and a significant number, which I really appreciated Mr. Chamble's approach, is out of the students receiving our after-school subsidy assistance, about two-thirds of them are in what we call our Tier Three Steps to Success Program to the family center, so their families we've already identified as having significant hurdles, and this is another tool that we can support them by. So two-thirds of the students, overall students who receive our subsidies are in that, are identified that way, and receiving ongoing support from the family center staff. So breaking it down by school, so at the Wildwood School, there's 100 students total enrolled, 22% of students are receiving after-school subsidy assistance. At Kapasi Dodd at Fort River, there's 108 students totally enrolled, and 23% of students are receiving the after-school subsidy assistance. And at Crocker Farm, there's 130, so it's our largest after-school program, and 13% of students are enrolled, who are enrolled are receiving our after-school subsidy assistance. So you can see there's definitely differences, but they're, they're not, in my opinion, wild differences, where someone's at 50% and someone's at 4%, it's pretty similar, and so one of the things I'm interested in, and Mr. Chamble and I spoke about today, is, you know, we appreciate the generous support of town meeting for your all consideration, but also, how do we support our after-school programs, looking in the future to be more self-sustaining, not because we don't want to support our students, but the reality is our fiscal challenges probably aren't going away by next year and the year after, and if there are other vouchers as we are pursuing at the preschool, as we look at that issue as well, how are we actively supporting these programs, which are fee-dependent at a certain level, to access all the vouchers that they might be able to access that don't come from the appropriated budget? So that's a whole lot of information, but that last point's important, because we want to think about supporting our students, but also, not just from a year-to-year basis, but what do, how do we have systems and structures that are fiscally sustainable to do that critical work over time? That's my update.
Thank you for that, Dr. Morris, I just wanted to ask a quick clarifying question, and then maybe turn to the rest of the committee. You mentioned looking to other sources that are not from the operating budget, in terms of striving for self, you know, sustainability, what other sources could there possibly be?
Well, I think the fact that we have two different subsidy programs in our elementary schools, separate from what we offer, what we don't, let me, can I say it differently? Let me say it.
Please.
So we don't know what we don't know, and we don't know looking, so what I'd like to suggest to us, and whether we'd need someone to help us with this or not, I'm not sure, is the candid answer, to look at what other after-school programs do, what subsidy resources they receive, just because we, our programs do receive subsidy, some subsidies that aren't coming from the appropriated budget, doesn't mean that there isn't more out there that we could support them in accessing. So I'd like to think about how do we look at this issue more globally, more generally, to say, you know, if we have this many from New England Farm Workers Council at these two schools, and another, you know, program is having EEC, I don't know if there's, you know, that may be fruitless in the end, but I think it's best practice to explore what are other districts doing, what are other programs doing, and if there are some vouchers out there from other resources, how do we support our programs to be accessing them? Not because we don't think they're doing a good job or accessing what they know, but it's not something we've intentionally worked with them to explore prior to now.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments from the committee on this topic? Ms. Spitzer?
I just wanted to clarify, so the $15,000, because I wasn't here during the January budget discussions, but when we were talking about that $50,000 being, was taken away, but now added back, about how many vouchers did that represent? And I'm assuming that was exclusively the ones we're talking about with the 64 students who are getting a support directly from the school, and not from these other sources?
Yeah, so it's really hard to, I worked, talked to Mr. Chamble today, because so many families are part-time, or some are full-time... families are part-time or some are full-time, it's hard to break it down.
Right.
So if we, I mean, as a percentage, that's probably the easiest way to do it, is if it was cutting roughly half of our vouchers, we would cut roughly half of the students receiving vouchers. Another way to do it is you just reduce the value of the vouchers, and we keep 64 students having vouchers and reduce the amount, but that may eliminate students from the program. So the calculus is hard to know until you get there. It's not to avoid the question, but that's, I think, the types of decisions that Mr. Chambel and I spoke about having to make.
Okay.
Does that, I wish I was more clear, I wish I could be more clear, but.
No, I understand.
There's strategy that would go into how to best use more limited resources, you know, do you kind of send it out more to everybody and just reduce the support? Or do you say, you know, here's our Tier Three Family Center families who are already receiving our support that we already have identified, need that access, do we prioritize those families, those two-thirds of families as opposed to? You know, so that, those were the decisions that we were, you know, that Mr. Chambel was, was thinking about and looking at.
Just to follow up on that, so that 15,000 is less than the full amount that we're spending on our funded vouchers?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, so I guess I just want to express a few thoughts on, like, the technicality of what is happening with the funding. So, you know, so this is, this is an increase of our budget, but it's, you know, with language that expresses a desire for it to be allocated for a particular purpose, but it doesn't require the committee to use for that particular purpose. And so, you know, so I'm glad we have this on as a discussion, because I do think we should have it on again for a possible vote about what to do with the additional unexpected funds, because I'm, you know, I have to be honest, I have a certain, I have a significant level of hesitancy and uncomfortableness with the, this kind of transfer of money, and I'm, I don't, I'm not totally clear on what the right thing to do is. So just to share a couple of thoughts, so like, one aspect of this, I think of as vertical budget equity, just within our own school budget. So we cut over a half million dollars from our level services budget this year, which, you know, next to the 1.1 million that we cut at the region, was the most painful thing that I experienced this year. And, you know, we had month after month of budget presentation, and we had departments coming in. I heard Dr. Morris talk about the work that the department heads and the principals did, going back to their staff to come up with budget. We froze budget lines, we went over line item by line item. I remember items less than 10,000 that had significant amount of discussion. And so, so to all of a sudden have funds that are allocated for a specific thing, I don't know how I feel about that. It's kind of like another way of phrasing the question, say you had the whole budget to do over again, and you have $15,000, what would you restore? And is that question most appropriately asked to the superintendent, to the school committee, to town meeting, to the public? I don't know, I don't have the perfect answer to that question, which is one reason for my hesitancy. The other thing that makes me sort of uncomfortable with it is, is how integrated our budget process is across departments in the town, and how much collaboration and cooperation there is, and how much harmony that has engendered between the departments over time, in good budget times and in bad, like this year was very bad. And, you know, I just talked about the pain that we went through with the half million cuts plus at our committee and the 1.1 at the region. I'm sure that the police department went through the same level, and people lost jobs and resources, and the fire department went through the same thing, the town went through the same thing. And, and I just wonder, you know, how fair is it to accept money after having gone through a very detailed budget process and just have it added back to our department? You know, and, you know, it made me think of, you know, one reason, Dr. Morris was talking earlier about how some people come here and move here for the schools, you know, and we were definitely one of those families that came here for the schools for a variety of the reasons that Dr. Morris mentioned. And, you know, we unfortunately came from a town where, where we would fail Prop Two and a Half overrides, and there would be very contentious, I mean, contention at a level that no one in Amherst has ever seen, of schools versus police and fire, of battling over budgets. And it got very vitriolic, and, and it made, it makes me really appreciate the level of respect and solidarity there is among departments. And so I know that can sound a little dramatic when we're talking about $15,000. And, you know, all that to be said, the value of adding more vouchers for low-income families to access after-school programs, that's without question. I mean, the value of that cannot be debated, like so many other things that we cut in our budget. But I just, I have a hesitancy to accept it, to, to set a precedent, and for our future relationships with the other departments in our town.
Yeah, I think to add my thoughts to that, I agree on many different points with Mr. Demley. I actually appreciate the level of discussion that we had at town meeting around this topic, because I think we heard from the community, a lot of concern about the importance of after-school programming. And, you know, I think, I was glad to hear town meeting talk about that in that way. I think, you know, we certainly here at school committee have talked about the importance of after-school programming quite a bit. None of these decisions that we made around the budget were easy. And I think that we, as a school committee, did debate and talked about a lot of the different budget items, but we're also relying on the input from, you know, administrators at the different schools, the different programs, and throughout the district to inform on our thinking about, you know, the things that they felt like, well, if we're going to have to make these drastic number of cuts, you know, how do we select, right? It's, you know, it's almost like a Sophie's Choice, we've talked about that so many times, right? It's a terrible metaphor to use, but it's in some ways many, very true, right? You know, I know I personally had a very difficult time letting go of a lot of different things, and brought that up during our discussions around the budget. And then, you know, that said, I appreciate the, you know, the fervor and passion that came from many members of the community around this particular topic, because many of their children have gone through after-school programs, you know, they really appreciate it. And also we understand the importance of it to low-income families in particular, right? Because oftentimes, when you're making a decision between, you know, your job and making sure that you're getting your kid off the bus, and after-school is the one program that is actually going to make sure that they're safe and taken care of, and that also benefits their, you know, education, they get their snacks and all that kind of thing, it's incredibly important, right? So I do agree, I think it would be valuable to bring it back, you know, for a second discussion and, you know, a vote to think about this. I also think that, you know, even though I agree on the sense, on the one hand, about not wanting to set any sort of precedent or anything like that, I do think it's worth, you know, maybe going back to, and, you know, perhaps you've already started that conversation with Mr. Chambel or with others, if they had $15,000, what might that help with, right? What might that do? Because, you know, I think it's, unlike other conversations we've had about changes or adjustments to our budgets, I think this is one of those things where it could potentially be a very sort of, you know, concrete, clearly defined amount of money that could be used to a certain degree, but it has to be done in, you know, in cohort with your staff and administrators, right? And I think, you know, coming back to the, to the school committee and saying, here's a very specific application for this money that may have, you know, come through, does this make sense? And then also, I think, you know, what is the long-term decision-making that goes into our after-school programming, right? Because if we are at a point where maybe it's not generating the kind of revenue that we would like, or it's not self-sustaining anymore, or it's relying, you know, it's very similar to the preschool program that we discussed previously, then maybe we need to have that kind of conversation as well, right? And so I would love to actually bring it back. At some point, maybe it's a two-part discussion, one is specifically about this item, like, what do we do with this, you know? But then I think maybe it's a second item around just after-school programming. And I think we had that maybe two years ago was the last time that we talked about it. So it might be worth having that again, just to, you know, bring it back to the new committee and, and see how folks feel about it. So I don't know, does that make sense to everybody?
I think I'd also like to add, at that update, if we could, I mean, maybe it's premature, but I'd feel a lot better, you know, saying, we're not going to use these funds for after-school vouchers, only if I knew that there were other subsidies available. So I think that you're saying, like, we don't know what we don't know, maybe between the time we make a decision about how to use these funds, if I had some information that actually we've identified this new source of revenue that we could use to help out these families, that would make it a case for potentially using the money for something else. But I'm not saying one way or the other how it'd come down on that, but just that more information would be really useful about potential outside sources of income.
Ms. Demley?
No, I agree.
Okay. Mr. Demley?
No, it's the last brief comment, that, you know, the reason why I feel conflicted and not clear that, like, oh, we should absolutely not accept this money, is, you know, I do respect the will of the legislative branch of the town, you know, and that, that, that's a role. And, you know, in whatever form it is, whether it's town meeting or the future town council, et cetera, you know, that could happen in the future as well, you know? So this isn't necessarily a town meeting, you know, thing. It's more, you know, when the budget process goes and then there happens to be an adjustment at the end with a request, but not a requirement for a line item adjustment, it brings up a very undefined point, you know? And I guess that's, I guess that's why we have discussions and votes in our.
Yeah, to me, it feels a lot like a game of Tetris, you know, like you're trying to find the right, or maybe Jenga is the better metaphor, so you know, whatever that game was, you pull out the one little thing and everything comes crashing down. Yes, I completely appreciate that and think, you know, I think you're, you've got some valid points there. Okay, so we'll, we'll bring this back for discussion and possible vote, and then maybe think about another sort of expanded conversation around after-school programming. Okay.
Can I have one just before Mr. Mangano leaves? I just had a question for him, sorry. We'd not talked about this before. Just from your perspective, since town meeting voted the higher budget amount, the school committee did need to revote before the end of the fiscal year?
The budget technically starts on July 1st.
Sorry.
The budget starts on July 1st, so I would think we'd want to have a vote on that with the higher, I mean, technically, they voted the additional funds, it's more, how do you, where do you want to put those additional funds in the budget by July 1st? It's not, it's not the same as like a gift where you can reject the funds, it's more where you want to put them.
Sure.
So I just wanted to.
No, that's a great point, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you very much. So the next item is the, we call the brainstorm for enrollment zoning process. This one also probably requires a little explanation. So it was an agenda item Dr. Morris and I had sat down, and, you know, we thought made sense, given how various committee members and the public have expressed ideas on how they'd like to see the enrollment zoning work continue. And there've been a lot of great ideas, but we can't implement them all. Also, we want to give the committee time to deliberate and provide input before any, you know, concrete ideas are adopted. So, you know, no recommendations by the superintendent or the committee decisions, committee decisions have been made yet, I just want to state that publicly for the record. We just want to establish a transparent process to capture good thinking and then share with the community our decision-making in real time. So with that little introduction, I'll, you know, I don't know if there's any other thoughts that you want to add to that before I turn to Ms. Spitzer, because I think Ms. Spitzer was one of the emails that we got recently, if I can just expose you that way.
That's fine.
And I, you know, I think it's great to just, you know, have, hear your thinking on that, but if there's anything else that you want to, you want to say about that.
Is that okay if I just, just add a little more context? It'll be old hat for everyone up at the table, but just, so I think, two things, one is we picked this area in particular in terms of if we are going to make shifts coming from the, stemming from the enrollment working group report and the ongoing work around that, that actually enrollment policy is purely policy. So as opposed to many of the other things that we're talking about, that I would still encourage us to be considering as a vote if we do make changes, this one's clearly a school committee decision around zoning. So one of the reasons to pick it out is, I think, as I said the last time, at the last meeting, we could get into a chicken and the egg dance on this one a little bit, whereas the other ones, I think, the process pieces, at least in terms of how that would flow, would be a little clean, because they typically wouldn't be, they wouldn't be policy-oriented, whereas this one really is. I think the second one is just to reemphasize something that you shared, not to take too much time for, but I think it's worth sharing, is really the conversation, as the chair and I spoke about, is around process. So at the end of the last meeting, we spoke about not, like, what should the zoning be, but what should be the process to engage stakeholders, who are the right stakeholders to engage? And how does that work happen? Because what we know from Mabe and others who have done this is that, sort of a precondition, right? So you want to have, be working on the curriculum side, be actually, you don't want to have the, okay, who's going to get in this program, being a lingering question, because actually there are curricular implications of that. So just to put an even finer point on it, like, if, and I'm not suggesting this, so I'm breaking my own rule, but I just want to contextualize it. So if there's decisions made that increase or decrease the number of bilingual students, that has curricular implications. So we don't want to wait till everything looks really completed on the curricular side and then get to enrollment and say, oh, there's a mismatch between these two variables that we really want to match. So sorry to delve a little into content, but I think just to, I only did that so we can take a step back and talk to the process pieces.
That's helpful. Okay, so Ms. Spitzer, do you want to share some of your thinking on this?
Sure. So I originally was thinking we need to start this conversation, just because I know as, as a Wildwood parent with a kid who could potentially, you know, be very excited about a bilingual program, what does it mean for those parents who aren't in the Fort River district right now? So I've been, actually been hearing these questions from other Wildwood parents, too. So I know there's a lot of excitement and a lot of enthusiasm, and I want to make sure that we don't let this piece get in the way of making real progress on having a dual-language immersion program in our district. So I, again, I'm going to stay completely, I don't want to take a position right now because I don't think I've thought it through enough on what the process should look like, but given that we have these models before us of one where it's purely geographically based, and others where there's a piece of lottery, I think when we make a decision about which enrollment process we want to use, we really want to make sure that we're getting feedback from the wider community, because we want them to be on board and supportive of the, of the program. And I think it's also important that we think about how any changes might look to folks who maybe aren't interested in the dual-language program, but for example, I've been thinking, if we're creating new identities for all three schools, you know, maybe I'm the parent who really wants my kid to be in the, I don't even know if this is an option, but like the STEM program or something, you know, say, say we create, so are we going to, is this going to open up potentially lotteries for kids going into other new programs that we're going to be initiating at the three elementary schools? And then also, I know there's been a conversation, because this question came up when I was on the campaign trail, about, you know, does my, you know, the kids who are currently divided because one child has needs that can only be met at one of the schools? So now, if we're opening up this box where we're potentially allowing kids to go for special programs, is this going to also start a conversation about keeping siblings together if one sibling is going into a program at a non-geographically zoned school? So for all of these reasons, I just think that if we don't proactively start the conversation around these potential questions, we could end up slowing down the progress that I'd like to see being made on these exciting bilingual, the bilingual program in particular, but also around the other conversations we're having about building an identity for the other schools. So just to start the conversation about some of the thoughts I've had, you know, this grew out of the enrollment working group, and we did have a lot of parents who put in a lot of time and effort, and potentially that could be one group that we could tap for some people who might be interested. And then I really want to broaden it and make sure that we're talking to people who are, you know, have students who are bilingual, students who are monolingual Spanish speakers, and especially preschool-age parents, because it's really going to be affecting those future elementary school kids. So all three of those populations I know are really difficult to, first of all, get information to, and then also, you know, if you've got preschool kids, it's harder to be free, you know, just in general, with childcare constraints. So I don't have the solution to this, but I wanted to start the conversation.
Okay. Well, I think that's valid, right? And, you know, and I think that's, the whole point of this is that we don't, none of us have the answers to this, I think we're sort of making it up as we go along, you know? You know, just to kind of continue that thinking a little bit more, I think, you know, all the committee members have expressed at various points in time an interest from engaging the wider community, and what that looks like could take many different forms, right? And so I think at some point, we want to, you know, maybe get to a decision of, you know, of how that's actually going to happen, right? Like, do we set up some sort of, you know, special group, you know, advisory group or something like that, that, you know, consists of different community members, and maybe some educators and others in the mix, maybe a school committee member, you know? You know, and/or is there something else that we're, you know, we're looking to, so various communications models, which we've talked about before, you know, making sure that we're using the PGOs that we're, you know, we're talking through, you know, using the district's newsletter and other methods to communicate. I think, you know, it's sort of another layer above that is. know, it's sort of another layer above that is not knowing what we don't know, again, but, you know, thinking about maybe the way to provide some guidance to Dr. Morris about how to engage this question and how to report back to us, right? Because we, you know, we're working towards a presentation that you're doing on, you know, dual language, and that's going to happen the fall, I believe. Do we want something, you know, along similar timeline for this question as well, right? Because, you know, in many ways, they are connected. There's a lot of, you know, different pieces that are going to be touching each other. So should there be some sort of similar kind of presentation, some sort of similar, you know, you know, sort of formal plan that gets put out there for input and review by the school committee? I think that these are all just the discussions and, you know, the decisions that we have to make. Dr. Morris, did you want to say something or?
Yeah, I agree. I mean, I was just, what I was thinking, yeah, Mr. Demling, please, is like the different work that may be happening over the summer and different groups. So, you know, we have the group that I referenced before that we look to work with CPAC on, that really looking at the specialized programs more specifically. We have kind of the identity groups that I mentioned, the groups looking at schools identity, I shouldn't say identity groups, I think that's a different connotation. La Cimbra, which is a two-day kind of dual language retreat piece, and then some level of enrollment zoning. So there's a lot of things going on, and so the advantage of that, though, because I'll, I tend to be a glass half full person, is that we could perhaps advertise these collectively, right? That there's a lot of opportunities in the summer for families and staff. Staff's easier because they're captive audience, but families to be involved with, if we can come up with some clear, this is when this is going to happen, this is how many hours is expected, this is the level of participation. I think to your point, Ms. Spitzer, I think the preschool population's trickier to get in touch with. We've had some success. Facebook seems like it's working better than, like, trying to email all the preschools, frankly. It's like, we have data now from, from early, early April that that was more effective. Not that we necessarily do one versus the other, but it was actually striking, the difference. So, you know, just as I'm hearing you talk and thinking about Mr. Demling's comment before about just, you know, there's a lot of things going on and how he actually communicated. If you had one thing that's, or two things, it's hard, but you have, you have a number of different call out. And we're fortunate in this community that we do get a lot of people to come out, but I think the caution is, do we get the same groups of people to come out to all the things, or can we diversify who would be participating? I think in this item in particular, it's going to be centrally important that we get a diverse group of, and diverse, I'm using that in a whole variety of ways, folks who are interested to come out. And also, I think that the, the biggest thing we can do in addition to them recommending something is actually being able to understand the constraints. Because I think on this item in particular, my experience so far is the constraints are, like, I feel like I live this stuff, so I'm able to describe it with some level of nuance, but especially if you're a preschool parent with no connection to the elementary schools, there's no way for you to know the constraints that we have and what transportation costs and how bus runs go. And so it is really complex and really, I think uniquely complex, not that the other things aren't hard or challenging, but to understand all those variables. So I'm just trying to think through how that would work. And I'm not saying that, like, like, you should have the answer, but just, you know, I'm just saying it out loud that I think for people to gather enough knowledge at the front end to actually be able to come up with solutions is going to be part of the challenge of this one.
It ends up being the district also managing a lot of these different groups, right? So with limited staff, that's also a consideration. Ms. Spitzer, if you want?
Yeah, I, I, just to take a giant step back first, is I think that there's two primary key, key stakeholder groups, and they're all preschool families. But then subdividing that, there's preschool families that have their oldest children are, are, aren't even in elementary school, and then there's ones that have older siblings. And they're going to have different perspectives and different concerns and needs and desires as we, as we go into this. And so I think we need to keep sight of both of those. And then there's the families that have potentially younger children in the elementary schools that are going to feel left out. And so thinking through what opportunities we might have if we look at the, the STEM program or the identity, whatever the identity personalities of Crocker, Farm and Wildwood might become, are those opportunities that some of the older children can come into later than kindergarten? So, you know, in this reconfiguration. So I see this as, it's difficult to think about just getting a group of diverse people involved. I think we really need to be thinking about the stakeholders that are going to be impacted. And then there's people like me who's really passionate about, if I weren't on school committee, who's, who's really passionate about it, but really, it's not going to impact me. And so my needs and desires are interesting, but really not helpful in a way, you know, to, to moving us forward. And then the other thought, too, is I think, you know, sort of building on, you know, what you both were saying about the number of committees and working groups and, and things, that we're trying to get input broadly from a broad cross section of the community, and, and really thinking about the time commitment that we're asking from different people, and then prioritizing that, and thinking about what are the ones where we really need the most invested time from, from the community, and saying those are the ones that we're going to do, like the enrollment working group style approach. And then others where what we're really seeking is, is input on needs, desires, fears, concerns about, about the approach, and what are, what are people hoping for from that? And then as well as input on potential concepts or ideas that we might be developing along the way. And I tend to, and this is just a free form, but I tend to think of enrollment zoning as one that might be more of that latter, that we're spending time to elicit and hear from, from the various stakeholder groups, and then working together, working as a group to formulate some concepts and ideas, and then going back to those with, here's some options, and then getting the pros and cons and fears on, on those versus a roll up your sleeves and, and really do all the research and the work in those working groups. That's just one thought.
Could I just respond to one thing? I agree with, it was helpful for me, the way you kind of broke those down. The one thing, the one caution I'd have, caution's not the right word, but I think we, it, I think it's okay for people who don't have kids who would be directly affected to big part. Not that you said it, you weren't, but I think we're talking a lot about preschool families. And I think there's actually some benefit for families who have been through the schools, not, I'm not looking for you particularly, but who are really invested and passionate about this topic, because I think they can lend a bit of a different perspective than a, a population who either have young kids in the schools or schools, as you noted, you know, haven't been to the schools at all. So I think having some balance on that would be helpful. I think it'd also shift the dynamic that perhaps could emerge of jockeying or like personal self-interest as opposed to understanding that the district in general is going to make a decision that's the best thing for the district and the children of the district, and, and not necessarily for individuals who volunteer for committees. So no one would come with that exact frame, but I think it'd be hard for, human nature is human, what human nature is, right? So I think it, just some balance on that would be also important.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm glad that you brought this up at this time, because I, I think of enrollment zones in the same category as like buildings and late, late start times. It's like few other topics can become as third rail dependent. And I think it's like one of the most disruptive decisions a school committee could potentially take, is to say, your kids were going here, well, now they're going over here. So, yeah, so very important to, to be very aware. And I think Dr. Morris has mentioned, when he's talking about dual language programs, that there are some districts that still haven't implemented. And this is, this is the sticking point, right, is that you can't figure out how to do this thing, because it is such a complex thing. So, so I like that we're looking at it now. And, what was I going to say? So in terms of when we engage, I, I, I think this is a kind of a tricky chicken egg thing with the dual language model, because I mentioned last time, and, you know, we don't have to get into it now, but just about, you know, thinking, you know, excitedly about, well, what if we doubled the size of the dual language program? We had four classes, and Fort River was a complete magnet school, you know, that would be, that would leverage the community enthusiasm, but what would that mean in terms of cost for staff and then transportation? And so until we get like solid kind of, okay, we would like to do this, but we definitely can't, and so we are locked into it's either two classes or not, for example, and so, and a couple of other variables, the constraints that you talked about, I think it's pretty hard to engage the broader community about how would you like to redistrict the entire enrollment zones of the, you know, of the, of the school? Because there are some advantages to having two enrollment zones, for example. You don't have to have those islands. And then there's other questions. So even though you might not have preschool kids, there's, they'll, if we did change the enrollment zones for all three schools, there would be the question of, do you, are you grandfathered in? Or do you, or are we going to force you to switch for your last year or two or whatever? Those are all tricky things. So, yes, I, I wish I had an easy answer, but I, I guess I would sort of defer to, to Dr. Morris and about, as, as, as he's journeying down the train of dual language, if, if certain sidetracks seem clearly not possible, you know, bring that to us and say, okay, we investigated this, you exhausted the possibility, X, Y, Z is not possible. That adds a constraint. And then when we build up our library of constraints, we can say, oh, now we know that we're not talking about three magnet schools across the district where STEM is over here and student-directed learning is over here, and nature engagement's over here, and dual language is over, you know, that we're just talking about this. And then we can, because I think that's the problem sometimes when you, even when you get people to come out to meetings, is that they, you just ask them a general question, and then the scope is just all over the place. It can be really interesting and fun, but not productive in terms of where you have to go. So.
I, I think that's really helpful feedback. And, you know, I'm just thinking, this is not a thought I had until like four minutes ago, so it's not well-formed, but just trying to think about who might be able to help us think about this, and are there examples from other, you know, that's not Mabe, I mean, this is not the work they do. They do the core curriculum, teaching and learning work. Are there other districts, I'm thinking in MSAM districts in particular, who I've spoken to, who might be able to walk us through what their process was? And, because I, I'm a creature of this district as well, right? And so I know my limitations of thought may be that I know things, the variable, some of the variables I know too well, and that, that can be both helpful and limiting as well. So I'm going to do some thinking about this and perhaps come back to the next meeting with more concrete information, but it's just helpful to thank you for the feedback.
Yeah. Sorry, go ahead.
I was just wondering if you could remind me, are you visiting additional bilingual schools in the future? And maybe this is something that you could have extra attention to when you go out, as you were just saying.
Yeah. So the last one that I have, is okay to answer. The last one that I've scheduled is Harrisonburg, and that's the one, I think, it's in Virginia. And, and one of the reasons I'm going there is because they've had such an atypical trajectory of increasing the number of bilingual schools. And there's a lot of variables that are different there. And it's, it's interesting. So I'm going because first of all, just from a time efficiency, well, it's not the easiest place to get to, the five dual language programs, I'll be able to see them. Like, you know, I mean, there's some benefits to see new dual language programs and ones that have been in operation for eight years. But the real, one of the other reasons I'm going, because it's, it's inconvenient to get to as compared to others, was just like, they started, they started with some zoning, and they changed the zoning as they had more programs. So like, I actually want to hear from them, but that's not until September, because their school gets out like a week or two from now. So the kids watching will be very sad to hear that in Amherst. But, um, yeah, they're on a different schedule. They start in, you know, early to mid-August, and they end quite early.
So it struck me that, you know, in an ideal world, I think we'd love to get somebody here, making a presentation about what's happened in their district, right? That's not you necessarily. We love your presentations, but, you know, maybe take a little pressure off of you and have another voice in the mix. But given the geographic distance and people's schedules and all of that, I'm wondering if it'd be possible for us to get creative and maybe have, you know, invite, like a video chat or something like that, you know, either the superintendent or someone else who can speak to that from Harrisonburg, and maybe from one of the other districts as well, that you visited, Dr. Morris. And if Mabe has any recommendations, that would be great, too, because again, they're probably dealing with this on a regular basis, as you've mentioned before. I do think it would be valuable to hear, you know, other districts, sort of, the, the particular challenges that they've run into, what we could possibly learn from that, and then share that also with the community, right? Because I think that having that other perspective from different communities might help ours kind of engage this process a little better, you know? If you hear from another community, well, this was a roadblock, you know, chances are good that you may not want to do that again, right? That you may not want to repeat that, especially if there's so much interest in which there is in exploring this, you know, dual language and other, you know, sort of quote unquote magnet ideas, for lack of a better word.
Yeah.
So I think it, it might be beneficial if we can make, make that happen. And then I think, you know, maybe one suggestion for the committee is that we think about, you know, again, not to front-load things happening during the summer, because there is so much happening and there's so many people who are away, but maybe thinking about early fall, you know, for, to bring the conversation back around on this topic. Does that make sense in terms of timeline and?
So, oh, I'm sorry, there was-
Mr. Demling?
Uh, no.
No? Okay.
I thought better of it.
Okay.
I think it's something that I'll check in with Ms. Hardy about and see, because La Cimbra is scheduled for, I think it's mid-August or something like that. So I just want to get a sense from her of kind of, would working on this in early fall be sufficient? Too late to, you know, just because she's walked through other, she's worked with other districts on kind of the process. So, but that's the right question to ask her.
Great.
Yeah.
Any other thoughts, Ms. Spitzer?
I was also just thinking, as we were going through the list of potential working groups, for lack of a better word, that are happening. I mean, could we potentially just take a subset of those folks who might be interested in this and just like create a subgroup of those groups to start this thinking? I mean, obviously, we're not going to, we don't want to limit it, the engagement to that group, but if they're already volunteering, they're already thinking about some of these complex issues, which look to me like they, that they're all intersecting in this enrollment. Like, the, just the enrollment zoning thing kind of affects so much, pretty much everything. So just the potential to, rather than duplicating efforts, maybe take some of the energy that's already getting put into these committees and, and task them with like a subcommittee of thinking about how all of these intersect with the enrollment. Just an idea that's not fully thought through, but putting it out there, now's the time to do that kind of thing.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so moving along to the next item on the agenda, which is the retail marijuana vote. I think the language for this motion is in your packets. And this item came up because the town of Amherst obviously has been thinking about how to best prepare the retail sales of marijuana products, prepare for the retail sale of marijuana products, not the other one. And we've had a discussion at the regional committee, it's been very vigorous, obviously, and mostly concerned with the location of the retail marijuana establishments, but also the safety of our middle and high school students, and then also just to ensure that in the conversation and the mix, we don't lose sight of the fact that a percentage of the retail marijuana sales are supposed to support, we want to make sure that they're supporting health education in our schools. And so, you know, at the elementary level, we're still obviously concerned about the same things as at the region, but we also recognize that access to the retail, you know, marijuana is probably not going to be the same as it will be for older students, just because younger students won't have, you know, the same kind of access necessarily. But that with the, you know, the ubiquity of these products sort of being everywhere, conversations in the community and all of that, that it's still something that we want to be very cognizant of how our students, our younger students are absorbing this information. And therefore, that it probably makes sense to set aside, you know, specific amount also from any retail sales for health education for our younger students as well. So that's what this motion is about. I don't know if there's anything else that you want to bring, sort of mention or contribute, Dr. Morris? This, this is, I'm just going to require a vote, obviously. So, but-
Oh, I think you, you captured it well.
Okay.
There you go.
To the best extent possible. Okay. So before we move to discussion, can, can I get a motion? Mr. Demling?
I move to request that the town of Amherst distribute to the Amherst Public School District a portion of the tax revenue from the sale of marijuana to support educational programs about health and well-being, given the increase of products in town that are illegal for minors.
Can I get a second?
A second.
Any discussion?
Just that, obviously, the, the health curriculum is different at the elementary level and different in first grade than it is at sixth grade. And, you know, so we wouldn't expect the same things to be happening at the high schools as the elementary level. But, you know, just having watched three kids go from elementary to middle school, there is some sort of flip that switches at sixth grade-ish. They're like, okay, I'm kind of done being a younger kid. And, yeah, there, there is a, you know, there's a certain level of, of experienced educator knowledge that I think they conveyed from a, from a health teacher at an age-appropriate level. And, and we really don't know, I think the thing about, I always come back to with implementation of the marijuana laws is, when we talk about wellness, we really don't know what it's going to be like in Massachusetts. And so- wellness, we really don't know what it's going to be like in Massachusetts. And so, this is all very much educated guesswork. And so, to set a foundation like this, I think is very sensible.
Very well said.
My only question, and maybe, maybe it's more appropriate for after a vote happens, because it would only matter if it was an affirmative vote, is just, if it passes, where would you like us to send the approved motion to? What, you know, one thing to pass a motion, but I am imagining that the body would want us to send it to groups of people. So, I can certainly wait till after the motion, but I just wanted people to be thinking about that, because I think it actually informs how people might think about the motion in terms of what happens afterwards.
Okay, thank you. So, I'm looking to the rest of the committee, if you want to...
No, I had, I had the, the same question. I didn't know how to frame it, so thank you.
Any thoughts, Mr. Demling?
Oh, I remember, first thought was the select board and the town manager. So, trying to think of, yeah, I think that would be the most appropriate. Not our state representatives. Town meeting is in session, they don't have a, a future warrant scheduled, you know, that would be the most appropriate. Unless, unless Dr. Morris has other suggestions.
I think, given the change in town government that's happening in the town of Amherst, I think that makes logical sense to me. I didn't know the town manager can share it with relevant staff, like Mr. Kravitz, who we met at a regional meeting, but, you know, he's very good at doing that, so.
Any other thoughts or comments? Okay. I would also agree. I think it's, it's timely, and, and I would, I would be so bold as to say, I think, smart to, to think about this and have this up for discussion at this point in time, so that when, you know, final decisions are made, and there's been a lot of input from the community on this particular topic in various different ways, you know, it's important, again, to not sort of criminalize, you know, this behavior, and to make sure that, or, you know, marijuana in general, that I think the people and the families who engage in marijuana use within legal parameters, we don't want to criminalize them, but at the same time, we also want to recognize that there's a lot of unknowns around both health implications and also for very, you know, for our students. And so, with that, just, you know, sort of increasing to the extent necessary or possible, any funding for that education to take place, and within a safe environment of the classroom and the schools, and, you know, the, the teachers and educators that our students trust, seems to make a lot of sense. So...
I agree.
Okay. So, we've, a motion seconded, ready for a vote. All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Okay, we are doing golf, but not quite as well as we had hoped.
I'm shocked that we're this.
Knock on wood, there's still some time.
I have a lot to say about the gifts.
Okay, so, we have some gifts that came in at the fairly, fairly last minute, right, today. So, can I get a motion? I wasn't sure if you wanted to say something, you might want to say something.
I'll try my hand.
Go for it.
I move to accept a gift from the Fort River Parent Council, number 1939, in the amount of $93 to support a gift fund for musical instruments.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Excellent. Thank you to the Fort River Parent Council.
Agreed.
Okay. School committee planning. So, we have a few items listed out here. We added a few more things during our conversation today. Dr. Morris, do you want to run through these very quickly?
Sure. So, what I have are, you know, the different policies that are awaiting review, and, you know, typically, policies, they don't have to, but typically, they go through the region first, and then come to the Amherst. But there's no reason why it has to be that way. And then I have the budget amendment for FY19, Fort River feasibility study, because at that point, I think our next meeting is, like, June 19th or something like that. So, there's, some of that process will have played out. Regionalization committee, I imagine there'll be an update there. I'll have one, I'm continuing to call it enrollment working group response, because at some point, I'll think of a better title for it, but I have yet to do that. But I actually like that it refers back to an existing process that occurred. But I'll have more information, like, some of what we talked about tonight and upcoming summer work. And then I'm not sure whether the committee would plan to do my evaluation, the Amherst School Committee would plan to do my evaluation that night. The timeline's sort of, my vantage point works, but I'm not the one doing the evaluation. So, easier for me to say, but, you know, being that you'll have the, the committee will have the artifacts on the 22nd, probably offers sufficient time for the Amherst School Committee. That's obviously a decision for you all to make, but when I thought about June 19th and perhaps not calling for an additional meeting, that's for you to consider.
So, I'm just looking at the calendar right now, just on that question. So, working backwards. So, we're looking at a presentation next Tuesday, which is the 22nd. That gives us almost a full month to the next Amherst School Committee. So, it makes sense to me, I think that works. Okay?
Yeah, I mean, I think it'd be sort of arbitrary to call for a meeting, like, four days later or five days later, when you have something on the docket that seems like it works on timing. And what I can do with the chair, perhaps, is sit down maybe next week and work on mapping out the timing of when you would, I mean, I'm assuming you're going to be the compiler of, for the Amherst stuff, just when things would need to be in, but a month is going to be, I think, more than, it's more than what we typically had, in terms of our process. So...
And I just want to say, I think last year, it was the chair and the vice chair that worked together. So, if Mr. Demling's amenable to it, might be nice to, to get some help.
Sure.
Is that okay?
Can I just ask what happens, what happens at that? So, if it's a, if we say that's going to be the agenda item, is that, that, all of the input from the device, the evaluation device, is compiled and collected, and we review it and discuss it then? Is that what?
Yeah, so, at that point, we basically have the, the summit of evaluation, and then that's what gets shared publicly and gets voted on. So, that's, you know, the final...
Okay.
Yeah.
Yep, got it. Thanks.
Okay, so, I see a lot of nodding heads, so I'm assuming that that works for everybody.
Great.
So, that looks good. Okay, and that should probably be everything for that day.
I would agree.
Well, just one thought, is if this ends up being contingent on what happens in town meeting this, next week or two, we may want to add the preschool to the agenda.
I guess it's true, because July 1st, right, is what Sean said.
And actually, we, we need that vote anyways. So, maybe we could just put that on.
Let's just add that on there for, yeah, that's a good idea.
I've got that.
Okay, great. Anything else?
I will not be able to be at that meeting. They have a...
Which?
The 19th.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Demling?
Yeah, well, so, given, given that it's the superintendent evaluation, would you prefer we had another meeting that you can attend? It's up to you.
There's a lot of meaty topics on that agenda. So, I don't know that that makes sense. I mean, I think I, I can probably submit either choose, you know, submit through this, through this device, and that's probably sufficient. But I'll email if I have a different thought tomorrow morning.
Okay. That works.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, another thought, not necessarily resolved now, but if there's a different date around that time that also works for you, I can't speak for the committee, but I'm amenable to thinking about not meeting on the 19th, but meeting on, for instance, the 18th to the 20th, or something like that. It's, it's not my schedule that's the most complicated that week, I'm sure, but instead of making another meeting, it's perhaps we could consider, is there another date that would work?
Well, how about this, because we're missing a committee member tonight, and who's probably going to have an opinion on this, just because it's important, right? And so, maybe I can send out an email, I can send out an email to the group, and then you can respond back individually with, you know...
To support you, maybe I could ask Ms. Westmoreland to send a doodle poll for just dates that week.
I was just about to say doodle poll.
So, that, it doesn't have to be your, your job.
Yep.
Thank you.
Is there any school committee that functions without a doodle poll?
Is there any meeting that functions without a doodle poll these days? I don't know. We'll find a replacement at some point.
Ms. Westmoreland has her hand up.
I just wanted to wrap up, just send the warrants before...
Oh, okay.
Yes, thank you.
So, I will take a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn?
Thank you. A second?
Second.
All those in favor? All right, this meeting is adjourned.